The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good evening. This is Chair Hemalata Danbekaar, and I'd like to call this rescheduled regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Deputy City Clerk Kevin Christian, will you please call Roy?
Commissioner Hopkins, currently not present. Commissioner Khan?
Here.
Commissioner Quincy?
Here.
Commissioner Shoresman?
Here.
Commissioner Walken?
Here.
Vice Chair Jorgensen?
Here.
Chair Dondakar?
Here. Thank you. We have quorum. Let the record reflect that the commissioners are present through teleconferencing. I'd like to remind my fellow commissioners and staff to help us with your background noise by muting your phone or microphone unless you're speaking. Can you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
One nation under God.
Indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item is the consideration of the minutes. If anyone has comments on the minutes before us at the last time, October 28th meeting, please unmute your microphones and identify yourselves. I see no unmuted microphones. In which case, I take it the minutes are approvable. So do I have a motion and second to approve the minutes?
I'll move approval.
Approval. Commissioner Khan seconded my Commissioner Walken. Deputy City Clerk, please call the role of the motion.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Commissioner Walken?
Yes.
Commissioner Quincy?
Yes.
Commissioner Shoresman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jorgensen?
Yes.
Chair Dondakar?
Yes.
Hey Chair Dondakar, just to correct the record, I didn't make the motion to approve. Someone else did.
My apologies, Commissioner Quincy. It's sometimes hard to catch who makes the motion, so.
I just wanted to make sure we do things right.
Thank you. I appreciate the correction. It was Commissioner Quincy making the motions, seconded by Commissioner Walken. The minutes are approved. At this time, we'll hear any public comments for items not on tonight's agenda. Items raised are generally referred to staff, and if action by the commission is necessary, may be scheduled for a future meeting. As you can see on the screen, participants of the webinar may submit a question containing their name and the item number they wish to speak on. Once public comment for the item is opened, your microphone will be unmuted, and you will have three minutes to speak. Deputy City Clerk, do we have any public comments on items not on the agenda?
There is no public comment on items not on the agenda.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Any court challenge to the actions taken on public hearing items on this agenda may be limited to considering only those issues raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city of San Luis Obispo at or prior to the public hearing. If you wish to speak, please give your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Consultant and project presentations are limited to six minutes. The second item on our agenda is a mixed-use project in the manufacturing zone. It consists of 100 new residential units within an existing structure. It's 78,825 square feet of warehouse space and an existing restaurant of 4,200 square feet. The location of the project is 1150 Laurel Lane. I'd like to ask the commissioners if for any expedite disclosures or contact with anyone who has provided information to the planning commissioners not on the record, so that information may be used as part of their decision-making process. If you've had expedite communications, could you please raise your hands? I see no hands raised. So I would like to move to ask Associate Planner Kyle Van Luin to please present the report.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Can we see this first slide here?
Yes.
Okay. So today, we are discussing a project at 1150 Laurel Lane. The project consists of a proposed redevelopment of a commercial property to include 100 residential units within an existing structure. The structure also provides over 3,400 square feet of office space, just under 39,000 square feet of warehouse space, and has an existing restaurant of 4,200 square feet. And the project includes exterior improvements to the existing structure and a sign program to address the size and number of signs for various tenant spaces. Staff's upfront recommendation tonight is to adopt the proposed draft resolution approving the project subject to the findings and conditions of approval. In terms of location, this project is located and accessed from Laurel Lane. The building is set back a ways from Laurel Lane and is also adjacent to the railroad. This location is in the manufacturing zone and has a previously approved mixed-use overlay on the property. The manufacturing zone is also bordered to the north by a public facility, which is our city bus terminal, or not city bus, but school buses. And there's also residential to the northeast. And there's an office zone that provides a buffer between Laurel Lane and the manufacturing zone. One thing I do want to clarify from the start, because I did get a couple of questions about this, is that the applicant did submit this kind of site plan that showed this second yellow arrow here that has access to the bike trail. That is an error, and that error, there will not be a connection to the bike trail from that corner. The lower one here is an existing connection that will be maintained and receive some upgrades. The one thing I also did want to mention, as this map here does show other access points such as this, that there is actually another bike trail that is recognized by the city's bike map that goes along the side of the bus depot next to the creek here. So that's another point of access to get to Southwood Drive and the swim center up there from the bike path, bike safety trail along the railroad. Here is a picture of the project design. This would be an overhead picture if you were looking at it from some feet above the bike trail there. And the project does include, as I stated, 100 residential units. Square feet for office space as well as warehouse space. There is an existing restaurant, Bang the Drum, which does have a use permit, which we'll be discussing in part as well, solid remodel and existing for the building and assigned program. This is showing some of the external improvements to the site. Well, a couple of things to note of this. Here is one of the ARC directional items was to add some additional landscaping in this parking lot over here. This is an updated version, so this is now including all these trees, the approach that the applicant took to provide landscaping in that parking lot. There was also some addition of additional detail about the landscaping that will be here. This is of note because this is where one of the residential units would be adjacent to a loading dock. And so some screening provided for that portion of residential units is provided by shrubs and tall shrubs and plants that is here. The other location where there is a, one of the residential units directly next to a loading dock would be here. And this detail does provide as well additional plantings to add additional buffer from where a loading dock would be to one of the residential units. This is the floor plan for the first floor. As you can see, these are the residential units along three of the sides here, as well as conversion of a single-story connected kind of annex structure here. So this does provide you with the floor plan. The existing restaurant would be located in this corner here. Office space on the first floor facing this side of the building. As I said, there are two spots to notice, which is the, or the residential unit here, and that buffering plants and tall shrubs is here. And then there's one studio here. This is actually pretty well set back for their balcony, so that would provide additional buffering as well as the landscaping that will be provided there. In terms of the second floor, their main warehouse area is open to below, but all of the area for the second floor is additional units. As you can see here, one thing we'd like to also point out is there are a lot of locations that we have for storage and bike storage provided, especially along this edge of the property, the building. In total, I believe, if I counted right, there is, I'm missing my note here. I believe this was about 100 of the bike parking spaces would be provided here. The long-term spaces, I should say. Other questions about kind of the compatibility for mixed-use residential and the other uses? From the zoning regulations, which were actually updated about two years ago to include additional language, not previously in the zoning regulations, to really set some parameters and requirements for what uses and activities are considered non-compatible. There are specific limitations on use that are listed. Those are provided for here. That is specifically major vehicle equipment repaired is specifically a use that's not allowed. And then other activities that the zoning regulations called out that should not be allowed for this type of mixed use would be storage of flammable liquids or hazardous materials, at least beyond what would normally be associated with the residential property. Manufacturing or industrial activities that include welding and machining and open flame, as well as other activities that create dusk, glare, heat, noise, noxious gases, odors, and other potentially negative impacts to the residential property. Also, this correlated to what staff has as condition number two in the resolution. Staff went a step farther and did identify some other uses that are usually allowed in the manufacturing zone that are not seen as appropriate now that there will be residential uses in the structure as well. As stated, the large vehicle heavy equipment sales is obviously not going to be compatible. Other uses usually associated with more your large vehicles, large fuel dealership, outside building material sales and heavy manufacturing usually allowed uses in the manufacturing zone, but the condition of the use permit approval would call these out as not being allowed. Staff did want to make a modification to the language in condition two, and this is kind of connected to how this is listed in the zoning regulations. So here's some additional language. Essentially, we want to add that, you know, the prohibition on these specific uses is because we find that that was consistent with the municipal code, the zoning code requirements and the intent of that section, which is prevent those uses that might have those specific uses that will more than likely be a non-compatible use. As part of condition two, there was a following paragraph. Staff is actually proposing to take that out of the condition. The reason for that is that that language is straight from the zoning code. So if it's a condition on this project or not, then the mixed-use property would need to follow it. So it is not necessary to restate as a condition that all of these other types of activities are not appropriate. And that kind of prevents any sort of confusion about what is a condition that goes beyond what the zoning code would allow for and what is already just in code. Instead, staff would like to propose that after the condition section of the resolution, that that language from the zoning regulations is restated and listed as a code requirement. Sometimes in resolutions, we'll highlight code requirements so that they're clear that they do apply to a project, although they would apply if that was included or not. So that is one change that the staff would like to make with the resolution, just so it's clear what uses are prohibited because that's what staff kind of said is consistent with the language and what is specifically the language from the zoning regulations. One other aspect of compatibility would be hours of operation. There was some questions about the existing use permit for the restaurant brewery, Bang the Drum, in terms of if those, if they are previously approved, hours of operation would be consistent. And just to cover those again, for Sunday through Thursday, the business is allowed to be open from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and then 10:00 a.m. to midnight on Friday and Saturday. However, it is specifically in that use permit that's existing that the hours of operation for any outdoor food service activity, basically anything outdoors, needs to be shut down by 9:00 p.m. This would prevent the possibility of external noise being created from people on their patio. There also is a condition that if they do have any live entertainment that goes above what we call the ambient level, loosely described, defined as you can have a conversation while somebody's still playing music is an ambient level, that if there was any live entertainment above the ambient level, that that also needs to be included by 10:00 p.m. So that would include anybody on a, like a microphone doing the trivia night or an amplified guitar. Usually, an acoustic guitar would just be at ambient level. Also, as a standard in the zoning regulations as well, that the hours of operation for any other use is limited to 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. If a user wanted to go to hours of operation outside of that, they would need to get their own, their separate use permit or separate approval to do hours outside of that. Given this location and the residential uses, we wouldn't expect that many new uses would want to be outside of that, those hours, the limitation on those hours either way. And there may be some questions staff is ready to answer, but that will conclude staff's presentation at this time.
Thank you very much, Kyle. Commissioners, I will call upon you in alphabetic order so that you can ask questions of staff. Commissioner Jorgensen?
No questions at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Khan?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Quincy?
Does staff know if the residential units are going to be for sale or for rent?
There has been no indication that these would be for sale. This was, so far, it's all proposed to be one ownership.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Shoresman?
Yeah, Kyle, I appreciate all the time you spent, was that yesterday already? Answering questions for me already. There was that one question that I had about the circulation on Laurel Lane related to the, say, the transport impact study and bicycle impact that you were going to check up on for me. I wonder if you had a chance to find out?
Sure, I did end of that a little bit more. I didn't have a chance to talk to Luke, but I took a closer look at the study. And what that study did show is that the existing condition on Laurel Lane, I believe that's because of the downhill slope, the miles per hour leading up to Orchid, that is, if you're coming from Johnson down Laurel. Because of the long turn lane and that bike path being there, that that's considered a lower level of service for a bicycle. The study was really just highlighting that as an existing condition. They weren't really saying that anything would be made worse or better by the project. And that in their executive summary, they did find that anyway, no mitigation or changes would, or further reduction of level of service would be included, but that vehicle trips would increase. I do think it's probably of note that, you know, the location being right next to the bike safety trail, and that is another way to get to that Orchid kind of intersection there, that, and just looking at, I don't know that we would expect this project to necessarily add that many bikes to Laurel Lane, given that the option of the bike trail is so conveniently located.
Okay, understood. I guess I should probably clarify my question for my fellow commissioners. I had asked Kyle about the traffic impact study makes a comment, and unfortunately, I can't seem to open the packet right now on my iPad to point you exactly where it says it. But it talks about that, I'm probably going to be summarizing this incorrectly, but just to give you the general gist, it says that the traffic speeds on Laurel Lane basically make it unacceptable or unsafe for bicycles on that section. But what I'm hearing you say, Kyle, is that the impact study isn't necessarily saying that the development will impact it anymore. It's just kind of saying that it's already not very safe. So it's not the responsibility of the project to improve it in any way.
Correct. It's a less-than-ideal scenario, given the speed of the street and that long-term lane that does exist there.
Okay. I'm not sure, I guess I'll defer to our chair about when it might be appropriate to ask questions or talk about the affordable housing allowance and the one unit and what is required and sort of relates to the public comment that we got from the Affordable Housing Organization that was, that we received. I just kind of have some general questions about all of that.
I think it would be good to get the staff's perspective on this. So this would be a good time.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, I'm probably not even really articulating it very well, but my understanding is there's one unit provided in this development. And there are some legal requirements around what we, what we have to approve and where we have any discretion. So I guess I'll just start there and see if you can kind of explain a little bit.
So let me cover the why there's only one unit, and then I'll let Roy cover the legal aspect. You know, for our inclusionary housing requirements, there is a factor that it's multiplied by, and that takes into account kind of the affordable by design idea. So if the majority of your units are small and square footage, you then don't have to supply as many dedicated for the affordable housing requirement. Can't be less than one, which is why we have one. But because the vast majority of these units are one-bedroom and in studios, they do have the kind of followed what would be considered an incentive to make smaller units. And the incentive on that is that your affordable housing requirement from the city would be less.
And I can kind of add on to that what Kyle's discussing. He's referring to Table 2 and Table 2A of our housing element in our Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. And Table 2 requires 3% low or 5% moderate. In this case, it's a manufacturing site, and so it's two units per acre. And so based on the area of the property, you get a number, how many units would be required. But given that Table 2A is our adjustment factor table, which is based on density, and it's based on unit size. And so that would allow the project effectively to provide zero. But you can't provide zero because there's a requirement that you must at least provide one. And so based on the affordable by design concept with higher density, smaller units, effectively, this project would be in that zero category, but one is required.
And then I have a very short answer in regards to the Housing Accountability Act, and that is that the letter writer was incorrect on the facts. It doesn't apply. I can give a longer answer if you need it, but legally speaking, you don't have to address their concerns. You can follow your purview as outlined in the staff report.
Okay, so just to make sure I understand what Tyler was explaining. We've had many developments that have far fewer units than this that we've looked at recently. I mean, this one has 100. And some of them have had 10 or 12, or 15 or 20, and they've had to provide more than this development is providing. But because this development is in an industrial area and because the property itself is less dense and there aren't very many residential or even buildings on it, then that's what allows it to have that minimum, meet that minimum requirement of one?
Yeah, I think that's what Kyle and Corey were addressing. What I was attempting to address was the letter you received in comment suggesting that you wouldn't have discretion to condition or deny the project because of the Housing Accountability Act. And that letter writer made a fundamental mistake in that they first assumed that the Housing Accountability Act applied, and then, secondly, they told you it did, and in fact, it doesn't. It only applies if a specified percentage of the square footage of the overall project is in housing, and this one doesn't come close to meeting that test.
Okay, thank you.
And just to touch on Commissioner Shoresman's question a little bit more. A lot of the projects that we see that you refer to that do, you know, they are in commercial zones, but they are providing more affordability is because a lot of those are asking for density bonuses, and so they're required to provide more affordability. In this case, you know, the manufacturing zone provides for 24 units per acre. It's a very large site, and so they don't need additional density, and they're not asking for a density bonus.
Thank you for those clarifications. I think that's all my questions right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Walken?
Yeah, thank you. I do have a few questions for staff. First of all, on the access and emergency access, there is quite a bit of development on this site, existing and then proposed. You've got 100 units, you've got over 100,000 square foot of commercial, and then you've got the existing crux climbing gym. I presume the fire department is okay with having only one means of ingress and egress to the site, one access point out to Laurel Lane. But I was wondering if the fire department had any additional comments to explain why that was okay in this case?
So I didn't get a chance to ask the fire marshal directly. Not sure what, he might be off, he's usually in our building, and I did not see him this week. Is that the fire department actually was very involved in the review of this project, mainly because of the mix of uses when you're introducing residential to a property that has historically had warehousing. There's definitely some current conditions on site that need to be remedied before that can move forward. And so in terms of the access issue, I can't speak to that directly, but I can say that this, this project in particular had a lot of attention from the fire marshal and fire reviewer.
Okay. Do you know if the entire building is fire-sprinklered?
Do not have that information. I believe it would need to be if they're introducing a new use like residential to it.
Okay. I had a question about the pedestrian walkway out to Laurel Lane, and we spoke about this or communicated about this earlier. Since that parcel that borders Laurel Lane is now, it's now a separate parcel. Since that parcel that borders Laurel Lane is now it's now a separate parcel because of the parcel map or it's going to be a separate parcel. I wasn't able to find an easement. That allows the residents and the employees of this site to actually use that walkway legally. So I was wondering if if in your research, you were able to find some sort of easement. And if not, do we need a condition to. Secure an easement as a part of this as a condition of this project?
Sure, and I think the applicant might be able to answer some of this is too in there when they give their presentation, but. They did divide up the property into some into multiple parcels, but it's still all under one ownership. And so. I guess it's not. Critical right now that that easement or that other. Access to the main right away is is secured as like I said, they're all under same ownership, but if that was to be redeveloped and that would need to provide. A new access way. From what I can tell that that would be probably on the left side of the driveway. That there's enough room there to provide a new pedestrian access to the site. But you're correct in saying that having the. ADA and pedestrian access from the public right away go across the different parcel is something to be aware of. But. I'm not sure that it's it's a critical point right now. A condition may be appropriate to say. At any such time that the existing ADA path is no longer usable, the applicant. The property owner would be responsible to immediately create ADA access to the site. Some of that specifically would be re-reviewed. It's a building requirement essentially for that ADA access. So. During the building process, any any other assurance assurance assurance. Assurment. Assurity would probably happen at that time as well.
Okay, yeah, I understand what you're saying about the property being in one ownership, but of course. If that's a separate parcel on Laurel Lane, it could be sold off at any time. At which time there wouldn't be legal access. For residents of this site to use that existing walkway, at least not legally. Anyway, I guess we can talk about a condition later when we get into our deliberations. One final question. There's a condition that I saw about the connection of the bike. Of the railroad bicycle trail to the site. It's condition twenty eight. And it talks about. The bike path needing to be conveniently conveniently accessible. To this to the project. And I was just wondering if that would pre that wording would preclude. The installation of a security gate, for example. At the entrance to the bike path. I imagine that there will be concerns about security from of of employees and residents. From that area.
I'm not sure if I have a comment on that. My take would be conveniently would be no gate. I don't. My understanding is there's not a gate currently proposed to be added to that location.
I thought there was an existing gate.
There is an existing gate. It hasn't been closed in quite some time, but it was historically closed when before bang the drum went in there.
Okay, so I guess my question and maybe the applicant has a comment is whether that wording and condition twenty eight would preclude some sort of security gate where. Where employees and residents, you know, need to punch in a code in order to open the gate, just so you don't have people wandering in. From from that area onto the site at night. So I'll I'll just leave it at that. Maybe staff or the applicant can respond to that later. And that's all the questions I have of staff at this time. I may have a few for the applicant later. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Wilkin actually echoed some of my concerns about the. Emergency exit out of the site and the issue of walkable access to Laurel Lane for. Residents of this. So perhaps the applicant could enlighten us on those two elements because they did. They did concern me and I would would think a built in easement would be necessary in terms of. Moving forward. I I had a question about. This is probably a building department, fire department question, Kyle, but. It was hard for me to figure out what the length of the corridors. These are single loaded. Interior corridors that are servicing. Each of these units and. Do you know, I couldn't measure accurately. What the distances are between stair eight and stair two or stair four and stair three. It's a it's looks like a very long. Single loaded but walls on either side kind of corridor. So that was one question. And the second question was about the heating ventilation. These because it's a single loaded corridor. The the light and circulation is only from the. Elevation that faces outside in each of these units. So. Is there, do you know what the what the plan is for. Circulation and ventilation given cross circulation isn't available?
Yeah, I don't have a. Outside my area of expertise, so I don't have an answer or if that was discussed. With the applicant. Don't don't have an answer for that one.
And I assume the fire departments looked at the length of the corridors and the and the. Distance to the nearest exit.
I believe that's case, yeah.
Perhaps the applicant could answer those questions. I have none other. So if we could move to. The applicant presentation, that would be much appreciated.
I was just gonna just touch on one before we get to that, just one item. I think these are all good questions, but. Just want to reiterate, you know, we're in the planning entitlement phase and in our review is not a code compliance review at this stage of the project. That happens at the building permit stage. This is a higher level. Review by our fire and and building staff to. Identify any big ticket issues that are obvious that the project would not be. You know, constructible should it, you know, receive entitlements and move forward to that phase. And so. We haven't heard that there are any of those big ticket issues that are not. You know, something that can be addressed through the building permit process. And and so those detailed questions about ventilation. And things of that nature are again, something that gets reviewed in detail at that next permit phase.
Thank you. Could we have a presentation from the applicant?
Kyle, can you give me the names of the applicants so I can unmute their mics? I believe Tom Jess was going to be the present presenter. Great. Mr. Jess, I see that you had your hand up and I've now unmuted your mic.
Excellent. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. First off, I'm Tom Jess with Eris Studio Architects. We're the architect for the project and I am representing the the property owner on this project. Start off by a quick thank you to the commissioners for having us and hearing this project and for Kyle. He's been great to work with. As has the entire city staff and particularly the fire marshal. We worked very closely with him on this project. I will go ahead and just walk through the presentation and then I do have the questions that came up. I do have some answers for some of those questions that all will. Touch on before concluding the presentation. So this this first part of the presentation is going to go pretty quickly through the slides. And what I wanted to do was just kind of step back and just talk about how this project. Fits into the the city as a whole and and really attempts to to try and meet some of the major city goals that are identified. Obviously, housing is something that's very important and we've gone through a few different iterations on this site, trying different things out. We've presented some preliminary stuff to city council at one point and gone back. To the drawing board. So. But with all of those, it's always been with the goal of getting the housing in there and. With that, we're also trying to the other the others major city goals and multimodal transportation, which we've talked a lot about. With some of the planners in terms of the bike pedestrian connections and so forth. So and then. Next slide, climate action. Obviously, we want to be as environmentally friendly as we can. And then finally fiscal sustainability and responsibility is the the final major goal. So I just wanted to just touch on each of these a little bit. So as far as housing, this this is true workforce housing there. Go ahead, next slide. They are affordable to those making eighty to a hundred percent of the median income. And the way that we were able to do that, that's spending less than thirty to forty percent is by. Reducing the size of the the units so that they're no larger. I think the average unit size is about three hundred and sixty. Three hundred or six hundred and thirty six square feet. And, you know, we feel like this because of the location and the size of the units is going to be attractive to to a lot of people within the the local workforce and provide housing that's necessary there. As I say, as I mentioned, it is located near the work centers. Next slide. As far as the multimodal transportation, we've were connected to the railroad bike safety trail. Actively promoting the use of alternative modes of transportation within the project with all the extra bike parking that we have. There is a bus stop directly in front of the project on Laurel. And once again, located close to services and work centers where being close there allows the other types of uses of other. Types of transportation to be effective. As far as climate action, this is something that actually came from the city council. When we first presented the project, we were going to demolish this building and do new buildings on there and we were. Tasked with the challenge of seeing if there was some way that we could reuse the existing building. So we took that challenge head on. And what you see before is is that we do have a large roof area and we're using quite a few solar arrays up there to kind of generate onsite electricity. We're incorporating a number of environmentally friendly features into the project design. And then once again, I think it's gonna. Ultimate forms of transportation. And then finally, I think there's one more point. Close to services and work center. So all those together. We're trying to be as environmentally friendly as possible with this project. Next slide please. And then fiscal sustainability and responsibility. The development's not requesting any financial assistance for this. This project. And we're going to pay all the impact fees for the for the project. And then the other thing that's a little bit not quite as clear is that providing this workforce housing is going to allow the local economy to grow and. I know as a small business owner, one of the more challenging aspects of having a business here is finding housing that. Employees even head of household salaries can afford here. And I think that. This is going to go a long way to allowing local businesses to expand. Next slide. And then one thing I wanted to just touch on because it is something that's a little unique to this is this is a true mixed use development. And when we're putting residential into a building that also has a warehouse use, there's some unique challenges that come up. So we've really tried to pay attention to that from the very beginning and try to create a situation where. The residential component is not sacrificed by being near, you know, the quality is not sacrificed. And so we did that as staff talked a little bit about is by limiting the number of uses and the types of uses that are allowed in the warehouse. Next slide. And then we did have an acoustic study done that made several recommendations to how to mitigate the noise and we do have a solid wall. That's a that's a sound rated acoustic wall. And a firewall between the warehouse and the residential to create that separation. And then we've also worked with the fire marshal to enhance the safety beyond what the basic code would require. And just to make sure that there's there's no question and no doubt. That what we're creating is a safe environment and we were able to work very closely with him to get that resolved. Next slide. So as was mentioned, here's the overall view of the project. You can see with the with the single family up to the north, the bike safety trail to the south. And the. The project itself, the building is set back pretty far from Laurel. In fact, it's very, it's kind of difficult to even see this building. It is a large building, but it's a little hard to see. From Laurel. But next slide. And then I did want to just talk a little bit about some of the amenities that we're we're doing on the site. The we're creating a landscape area between the creek and the building that wasn't there before. It was just a. An asphalt parking lot. We're creating a number of trees over there to provide some shading in there. There's some existing amenities up on the site that you'll see in the next slide that that talk to that, but. Creating an outdoor landscaped area to the north of the site with some barbecue areas and tables. And then we're also using landscaping and screening to separate the points of the building where the two uses do come close together as. Staff tried to did a good job of explaining. You heard the next line? Again, and here there are a few few amenities out there that have kind of a little bit been neglected over the years. But there is a volleyball court. There's an all sports court that has just recently been renovated and and looks really sharp and nice and. It's going to be a really nice amenity. And then one of the things what we've really tried to do is locate the bike parking all the way around the building. You can see there's bike parking inside the building to the south, to the north. All around it, we're locating the bike parking to try and make it as convenient as possible. And then we're enhancing and cleaning up a lot of the landscaping and cleaning up the. The sidewalks and and so forth to make this a really user friendly pedestrian and bike friendly connection to the. Safety trail and all the way around the building, to be honest. Next slide. So here's a view of that that patio area and you can tell, you know, see right here that we're really breaking this building up and trying to make it a residential area. Make it have a much more of a residential feel and you can tell that on some of the units, we're pushing them back from the face of the building to create like recessed patios. And some of the other ones you'll see on the on the next slide, let's say. Oh, this is the the sports court that's out there. That's that's already there, but it's being enhanced and cleaned up. Next slide. So here's the. You can kind of see the basic idea here is to wrap the building with the residential. So the existing offices up on the north are going to be converted to residential and then down below the existing restaurants. Down the corner and the existing offices along the south side, they are going to remain offices. I think the next slide is the proposed floor plan. So you can see how we kind of wrap the buildings around there and then the warehouse is in the center of the space. And the next side is the existing second floor. And so this office on the on the second floor, we're going to convert to residential and then continue to wrap the residential around. So if you go to the next slide. You can see how we're able to wrap the residential around. And then this would be a good time just to talk to the the question about the corridors. I think the longest corridor is under two hundred feet, which is a long corridor and does sound like a long corridor, but we do have and you can look in there that the corridor grows and shrinks and expands. Some of the storages are larger, so it's not just a straight. Corridor on the on the longer ones. But. Next slide. And then just a quick view of the roof, just to illustrate how many solar arrays we are putting up there. It's quite a bit. It's going to offset a significant portion of the electrical demands of the of the building. Next slide. And so here's the overall view. The building as it is right now is a long horizontal massing to it. And what we're trying to do is break that up with some vertical elements. Play off the patios and change some of the windows. There's a lot more windows now than there was before, obviously for the residential uses. Next slide. Here's the bang the drum patio with the landscaping around the side and the trellis overhead trellis there. And next slide. Here's the main residential entry coming off the south or towards the triangular shaped parking lot. You can see the and then in in some cases we are have the second floor balconies are projected out as opposed to recessing in and it just kind of varies around the building. And there's ground floor patios as well. So we're creating outdoor space to all these units, which is really important when you have a smaller unit is to have a usable outdoor space. Next slide. This is the entrance coming off of the north side. You can see there's an overhead trellis structure. That invites you into the entry of the building through there. And you can see how we're opening up that that building facade with windows and awnings and recesses. And I and I will say that we went through the ARC process and presented the project there and received some feedback from them that we've incorporated and we feel that. We're really happy with where the building is aesthetically and our process with the ARC was was very fruitful. Next slide. So so that concludes our presentation. The one thing that Kyle did did talk about a little bit was the sign ordinance or the sign program that we're asking for. So the signs are when you when they're cumulative, they're larger than what would normally be allowed. Per the building and the main reason for that is just the sheer size of the. And the main reason for that is just the sheer size of this building. It's a really large building. So the amount of then, so the amount of the amount of the sign is a little bit more than what would normally be allowed. But we feel it's appropriately sized. A R C did review it. They reviewed the signs, the sign lighting, the all the parameters and and found it to be in conformance with aesthetically what they felt was appropriate. So we feel good about that as well. And beyond that, we are in full compliance with all the other zoning regulations and and feel hopefully that this is a project that you can find a way to support and allow us to move forward. With that, I'm going to go ahead and just answer a few of the questions that came up. And if there's any additional questions, we'd be happy to answer that. One question came up about the fire department access and the threshold for the requirement for two points of access. That threshold is two hundred units. So at one hundred units, we're significantly below the threshold. And we did work very closely, as staff mentioned, with Roger, the fire marshal. And with access all the way around the building, the everything that we've done and proposed is in compliance with the with the his requirements. So we feel very comfortable there. There was a question about whether the residential units are for sale or for rent. These units are for rent. They're not for sale. There was a question about whether the building in its entirety is fire sprinkled, and the answer to that is yes. The entire fire, the building is covered with a commercial level fire sprinkling system. There was a question about access, pedestrian access to Laurel across adjacent properties. And as part of the parcel map process, there is an easement exhibit that's being presented. Now, we have, we have the tentative parcel map. We're in the process of getting the final parcel map. And as part of that process is an easement exhibit. And that easement exhibit does have a blanket cross-access easements in some locations. And some locations have targeted cross-access easement. But but there are easements, and it's legally required to provide access across those parcels to the to Laurel Lane. So that access is a permanent access. It may shift as the project designs, but the the requirement would 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 remain. And then I think there was a question about mechanical ventilation that Tyler said maybe isn't necessarily what we're discussing at this at this level of hearing, but I'm happy to answer the question. So each each apartment is going to be equipped with a what's referred to as a mini-split H V A C system. So they will have heating and air conditioning as well as fresh air, makeup air into the into the spaces as well as operable windows. Each each building, each unit will have an outdoor space, so they'll have operable windows, sliding glass doors or French doors. And there's there should be more than enough ventilation for the size of the units. It's a small unit. I believe the last question had to do with whether or not there would be a gate at the railroad there. I got to be honest, we haven't really thought much about that. I mean, if there is a gate, it would have to be fobbed access for the residents to be able to get in and out. And I know that Bang the Drum is going to want to have that open during business hours for people to ride their bike to Bang the Drum. So my assumption is that if there is a gate, that it would be open during the business hours when Bang the Drum is open or the warehouse or office businesses are open so that people have access in. But maybe it's locked at night and then accessed only with a fob for the residents. Anyway, I think that I think those are the questions that I had written down. If there's any additional questions, we're happy to answer that. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jess. That was extremely helpful. I I'm going to call on the commissioners by name if you have questions of the applicant at this point. Commissioner Jorgensen?
No questions right now.
Commissioner Khan?
Yeah, Mr. Jess, what is the interaction between the residential units and the warehouse would be one question. And to follow up to that, what uses our plan for the warehouse or storage units? Will the residential units be able to see or hear the warehouse activities?
That's a great question. The answer to the to the second question is no. It's a solid wall. And in fact, in negotiations and and working through this with Roger, the majority of that wall is actually a three-hour rated firewall that goes from the ceiling to the ground to create that that separation from a building code perspective. And it also is a very good sound attenuation wall as well with just the the mass of the drywall. So it's a solid wall between the two. And then the question about the uses, the uses that are currently in there, and we would anticipate other uses similar to that. There's a the packaging goods, you know, company that makes packaging goods or stores packaging goods in there. There is a company that makes little drones. And so they they test, you know, like little drone type stuff in there. So there there are no heavy manufacturing uses in there, and there's no main heavy manufacturing uses allowed in there. In fact, Roger was, sorry, fire marshal, was very specific about what's allowed in there and what's not allowed in there. And with the residential as the priority.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Quincy?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Schausman?
Yeah, I just have a couple. First, I just want to say that this building is, I I agree with everything that the applicant said. This building is actually really hard to see. I mean, I go by it daily a couple of times, either on the bike path or on Laurel. And you really don't even know that it's back there, even though it's this huge building when you actually walk back there. So it's it's really well hidden, which I think makes it nice for potential residential space. So I'm I'm kind of looking forward to actually having that. It's not quite in my neighborhood, but around the corner and down the street sort of in my neighborhood. And I do think it's really well located for the bicycle and pedestrian access right there. It's it's just a great location in general. My questions are about a little bit about what some what's been hinted about already or or mentioned briefly by some of the other commissioners, the the improvements that will be made to that that access to the to the bike path to make it more pedestrian friendly. Do you know, I mean, other than installing some lighting, do you have plans to add add more walkways? Maybe they go around the west side of the building or will? Right now, if you if you walk through that gate that leads to the bike path and you walk up the path, it pretty much leads on to the patio of Bang the Drum, which is great for Bang the Drum. But if you wanted to go to that side of the building, you either have to walk through Bang the Drum's patio or walk all the way around the other side of the building. So I'm just wondering, what's what's the plan for that additional pedestrian bike presence on that side of the building?
So, great question. The that particular side has a has a number of existing stormwater treatment areas, which is all that landscaping that's there. And we're required to maintain that over there. But we may be able to still sneak another path around there that doesn't go through Bang the Drum. But that's the one pinch point on the site. The rest of the site, we are putting new walkways all the way around and and making connections through there. Especially on the, it's a little, north is a little cockeyed, but we'll just call screen north straight up. So on the east, there's a there's a walkway that's that's going around the all the way around there in front of those units that are there. And then around the top, we're putting in the new patio and new connection across to those amenities that are across the driveway. Really trying to emphasize that outdoor amenity space and make that more usable.
Okay. Also, sort of in reference to the long hallway that's been discussed a little bit. Yeah, I was I was commenting to Kyle when I spoke to him yesterday. We we don't, at least not to my knowledge, have, because of the Mediterranean climate in Slow and the particularly temperate area in that part of town, we don't really have very many buildings that sort of have these apartment-style long hallways like this one is proposing. A lot of the a lot of the condos and apartments have exterior entrances. And I know that would change a lot about the the individual units. But I wondered if that was ever given consideration to avoid having those interior hallways like that and just putting exterior entrances, at least on the first floor apartments.
Another another good question, and we certainly did look at that. But it's very similar to if you look at like a hotel where they have an interior corridor hotel. I think more people are more familiar with those than apartments. But what what the interior corridor does is allows for much more privacy to the actual apartments. Because you don't have people walking in front of your apartment, and you're not walking right in on through your patio to it. So while the the process of getting from your vehicle or your bike to your apartment isn't necessarily enhanced by the long corridor, the experience of actually living in your apartment is is much more enhanced. It's it's a much better living experience to have your windows looking out onto an area that that isn't the main pathway for everyone to going back and forth to their apartments. So so that's really what what drove the design there was really trying to emphasize the priority or prioritize the living experience within the apartment as opposed to the getting to and from the apartment.
Okay. I agree that it's a difficult, I don't, I don't know how you mesh those two things of having the exterior access and and, you know, having it without without the hallway. It's it's clearly complicated, and I guess it can comes to my mind, especially now with COVID. A lot of people aren't really wanting to pass by each other in in narrow hallways. So I guess that kind of gets to the question that Jared Dandakar said about ventilation too. So just something to think about.
That that's a great point. And we do have the opportunity for skylights for the second floor corridors. Obviously, the first floor corridor would be much more challenging, but we can introduce natural light through skylights in the second floor corridor.
Yeah, or airflow. That's a great idea. I like that idea a lot. And then, finally, the the bike parking on the first floor. Again, I want to commend you, the amount of bike parking is is a biker's dream in this complex. And I was I was a little concerned when I first saw the the upstairs bike lockers, because I thought at bike storage that it would be difficult to get bikes upstairs. But since you have elevators, that solves that problem to a certain extent. But the the bike storage on the first floor or on the ground level, I wondered if you had given any any thought to spaces that would accommodate cargo bikes or would, if any, the lockers might have access to electricity. I think especially with the accessibility of the of the bike path here, it would be good to have some spots and spaces for storage of those large cargo bikes and the electric bikes that can be charged.
Yeah, absolutely. And then I will say, my wife loves her Rad Power bike that she has. And being able to charge it up would be really helpful there. So we really are striving to make this as user-friendly for the tenants as possible. And those types of things are really easy to do and really are like nice little perks that everyone can take advantage of. And if for any reason we do run low on bike storage, I don't think we will. I think we have about one hundred and thirty thousand square feet of warehouse space that we can probably carve a little chunk out for and provide some electricity to to add to the ground floor bike storage if we needed to. But that that is something that we've really focused on and and tried to be as as friendly as possible to the bikers.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation. Even if you only had twenty spots that you could charge at or or park the large bikes at, I think it would be really beneficial to the residents.
No argument.
I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilkin?
Yes, thank you. I do have a few questions of the applicant's representative, Mr. Jess. First of all, thank you for the the answer about the the parcel map and the easements. But I I still wasn't quite clear whether that existing walkway that goes out to Laurel Lane is actually covered by an easement of some sort.
I can't tell you a hundred percent that that existing walkway is, but I can tell you a hundred percent that that's the intent. So if there was a requirement or a condition to address that specific walkway, that would be totally fine. And I think the the language that we would propose would be something along the lines that there would be an accessible and it is required by the building code. That's why that was put in there originally. But, you know, if the the access has to be provided from the main parcel with the building to Laurel Lane, an accessible pedestrian pathway, you know, there's no question that that has to happen.
Right. It's just that that existing one is 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 away from the driveway. And so it seems like a desirable access to preserve, since it doesn't require people to walk right next to the main driveway in and out of the site. So maybe we can address that, commission can address that later. You did mention about walkways around the building. And I just wanted to make sure that there's a continuous walkway around the entire perimeter of the building or will be.
It's it is a continuous walkway. There is a portion when it goes through the loading docks. That's not a protected walkway. It's a striped walkway through past the loading docks. But beyond that, it does go everywhere around the building.
Okay. All right, good. And I noticed on the floor plan, there are a few residential units that actually abut the entrances to the warehouse. Their side sidewalls do. Is there any special construction for those walls or is standard construction sufficient? Next, between the residential and the entrance to the warehouse?
No, those those are the the same situation that I was talking, that Commissioner Khan asked about, where those would be fire-rated walls that are also acoustic walls at all the locations between the residential and the and the warehouse. And in fact, when it directly abuts the warehouse, it's actually two separate walls. So there's an airspace between those. There's the fire-rated solid wall that runs all the way up. And then there's a second wall inside of that for an additional acoustic buffer.
Oh, okay. So that's beyond what what would be standard construction, right, in in those cases?
That that is correct. Yes, it's we're going above and beyond to make sure that we enhance the both the fire safety and the acoustic isolation between the two.
Okay, so that that construction that you just referenced, that would apply to there's, I think, maybe four units total that directly abut the entrance to the driveway. I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly.
Correct. I'm looking at the floor plan. It looks like unit one twenty-one, you know, one oh one, two oh one and two twenty-one, you know, the numbers. But that's also the case at the corridor, where we have the we have the firewall that's independent of the corridor wall. So there's double wall there. And the reason for that is the firewall, to meet the three-hour requirement, can't have any penetrations into it. So it can't support the second floor walkway, because that would be basically penetrating the the fire rating. So basically, we're building a vertical wall that's untouched by any structure. And then, on the other side of it, on the residential side, we're building a second wall that supports the walkway and provides additional acoustic separation.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then, finally, are there any special measures that are being taken to protect protect the residential units that are right above the Bang the Drum from noise impacts? I think there's about six or so that are right above or almost right above the Bang the Drum use. Any special construction measures for noise mitigation in that location?
Yes. So what we're doing there is is these are, these are, the the existing structure is a really deep wooden wood top and bottom cord and horse and diagonal metal bracing through there. So it's about a twenty-four to twenty-eight inch deep metal trust or trust system there. And then there's there's lightweight concrete on top of that, which helps to deaden the noise. So what we're doing is we're creating a one-hour rated floor ceiling assembly in there that's going to have a high. And then, when you're doing acoustic, it's called S T C. It'll have a high S T C rating by putting resilient channels across the bottom, so there's isolation between the drywall and this truss. And then we're insulating the entire joist cavity with bat insulation. And then the acoustical isolation, that's the mass of the concrete on top also helps reduce the noise there.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for those detailed responses. It's very exciting. All the problems that you've been working on to make this this creative All the problems that you've been working on to make this this creative product work. And I just wanted to ask you two quick questions. You said the corridor length was about 200 feet. So does that mean maximum about 100 feet? Somebody would walk from an apartment to a exit stairwell?
That's correct.
So, and and the second thing is I I I see that the ground floor patios are actually elevated. So it's not really possible if people wanted to egress out from their patios to the walkway. Would that be possible or not? It's there no, the sections weren't very clear to me. So I couldn't figure out.
So so based on the size of this building, the grade varies, the grade relative to the finished floor varies as you wrap the building. On the page, on the page right side, the grade is quite a bit lower and that's, that's the existing condition. It's quite a bit lower than the finished floor. So those patios are elevated. And I think that was shown in one of the renderings. Whereas on the north side, those patios are right at grade and you can walk right out. And on the west side, those are right at grade and you can walk out. But the grade does fall off as we move to the right hand side of the sheet.
I see. So and and you, when you have the possibility of just walking out at grade, would the patio enclosures have a door or something that would allow that to happen easily?
And I think that in one of the renderings, it actually showed that. It was the rent, it was the very last rendering that had the the entry that said Laurel Creek on the on it. I think that you can walk right out on that. I'm speaking from memory, but I believe that should be the case.
I see. Well, thank you.
Maybe Kyle could show us that again if he's there. I I had, I was kind of trying to understand what that looked like too.
So if you wanted to go to my presentation, it's the second to the last slide. And then the third to the last slide shows the elevated ones. Actually, the the presentation that I put together for the for tonight's hearing. If you still have that available.
Yeah, I apologize. I must have minimized it. Just a second. I'll open it back up.
Okay, I can. Perfect. So it's the, it's the second to last slide. So all the way at the very end. Just go one slide. You can see those are the patios that are at grade. See that they have railings that allow some access in and out. And if you go up one slide before this one, you can see these are the ones where the grade is lower and you can see that we had to put a handicap ramp to get up to the right height. But those patios are elevated about three or four feet. And you can see those in the background there. Those are the ones that are up in the air a little bit. And the idea is to try and make them look like a little bit of like a brownstone type of idea where each one kind of has its own vertical identity and orientation. Thank you.
So just to clarify, it's just to clarify, those that you're showing now, those can't be accessed from the exterior. They would have to, the resident would need to go in through the hallway, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Thank you for clarifying that.
So I think we are ready to move to I I don't see any other questions for the applicant. Thank you very much, Mr. Jess. If Deputy City Clerk, do we have any public comments on this item?
Uh, one moment, please. So I had seen a hand earlier, but it appears that they didn't want to speak. The hands no longer up. I just wanted to get the instructions back on the screen. So if anybody did want to speak, they would know to raise their hand or type in a question. We'll give them another 30 seconds. All right, I'm not seeing any questions or hands raised. So there's no public comment on this item.
Thank you. And I'd like to bring the discussion back to the commission. The floor is open if commissioners have any comments and discussion items. And my apologies for my cat. He's very vocal.
Well, I'll start it off. Commissioner Wilkin, I'll, I'll start it off if that's okay.
Please, yes.
Okay. First of all, some general thoughts. I think this is a very creative reuse of an existing warehouse building and office space. I think, I think the the design does a good job of assuring compatibility between the residential units and the warehouse space. I think this is a good location for residential. It's near to a lot of commercial uses. It's near nearby to recreation, to a bus stop and adjacent to the railroad bike path. And also the the extra signage and the size of the signs seems to be appropriate based on the huge building size and also the fact that you really can't see the building from the street. So that all makes sense. I am concerned about the compatibility of the residential units, especially the ones directly above the Bang the Drum Restaurant Brewery. And in particular, it's the operating hours, which have already been established by a previously approved permit, which is not before us tonight. I think if if that permit were before us tonight and we were looking at a mixed use development with six or so residential units right above the brewery, we might establish different operating hours as we did in other cases. I'm thinking of the Mix project that the commission heard on appeal last year, I think it was last year at that was on Johnson, I think it's Johnson and Monterey. And I think the commission established a nine o'clock closing for the restaurant, which also I think had some music with also. And in that case, the residences weren't directly above. They were one, two floors above the restaurant. The residences were on the third floor and the restaurant was on the first floor, but there were still noise complaints. And I think it's inevitable here. There are going to be noise complaints. I think we're setting up a situation where we could have a lot of incompatibility with residential and and the brewery. But the brewery is not in front of us today, hasn't been noticed. They've already received a minor use permit approval and they've got operating hours that go to midnight on a couple of a couple of, on the weekend, I believe. So there's still going to be noise. If not from inside, going to the units above, then from closing activities after the restaurant closes, from people mulling around outside and going to their cars after after the restaurant closes, there's still going to be noise. I guess the only, the positive thing is that people moving in to the residences will be aware presumably of the restaurant because it's already there. So, but I I do have concerns about the the restaurant and I've got a condition I can offer that might just beef up existing condition 17 just a tad. And my other concern is about the access to Laurel Lane. And I would suggest a condition to assure that there be an easement over that existing pedestrian access. Nice cat. Over the existing pedestrian ease access out to Laurel Lane. So so those are my two concerns, but I think in general, it's a, it's a a good reuse, adaptive reuse. I think that's consistent with the housing element. We're getting affordable by design units in a good location. So anyway, I'll leave it at that and I don't know if I should suggest conditions now or just wait until others have a chance to discuss.
Perhaps it would be good if you have the condition just to let us know what you had in mind. So we could.
Okay. Okay. Well, the first condition would have, this would be a new condition, I think. And it would speak to the easement that goes out to Laurel Lane. And so the condition would be to secure an easement. I guess this would be prior to, and I'll let staff have the state the correct timing prior to issuance of a building permit or occupancy. To secure an easement over the existing pedestrian path on parcel one to Laurel Lane. Or if that's not possible, since it's not in the app, it may not be in the control of the applicant. If that's not possible, an alternative path and easement to Laurel Lane to the satisfaction of the planning director or community development director in public works. So that would be one condition. And the other condition would be a revision of condition 17, which is the one that talks about noise. And that would be to specify that a noise consultant shall verify that the building design and construction reduces noise from the warehouse space and from the restaurant brewery to meet cities, the city's noise ordinance. So it's, it pretty much says what the existing condition says, except it just requires that a noise consultant verify it. Since I think this is a pretty noise, there's some noise sensitive uses here. And six or so residential units right over a brewery restaurant with, that'll have live entertainment and late operating hours. So those are the two conditions I would suggest other. But I would be in support of the project with those two conditions.
Thank you very much. Do we have other comments? We've had Commissioner Wilkin and Commissioner Jorgensen.
Well, just a quick question around the change that Commissioner Wilkin suggests for condition number 17. I I thought I heard that an acoustic study was part of the work that was done for this project already is is that would that, I guess I want to ask staff. Would that be relevant to the concerns that Commissioner Wilkin is addressing? I just want to be sure we're not duplicating what's been done.
So I'll, I'll ask Kyle Van Luin to confirm that, but I was, I was going to suggest that those conditions should probably be tied to a motion and put out there on the floor for a second in deliberation. So to throw the conditions out there absent a motion seems a little awkward.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I think it would be a good, good idea to put a motion on that.
Okay, I'll move that we adopt a draft resolution to approve the project subject to the findings and conditions of approval with to with one additional condition regarding the easement for the pedestrian path to Laurel Lane and then a revision of condition 17 to specify that a noise consultant verify that building design and construction reduces noise from the warehouse spaces and the restaurant brewery to meet the city's noise ordinance. And if I'll go ahead and answer Commissioner Jorgensen's question. The noise study was done specifically for transportation noise, so railroad and highway noise. So I'm just suggesting not another noise study, just that an acoustic consultant verify that the design reduces noise to meet the city standards for the brewery and the warehouse.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Wilkin, second Commissioner Khan.
And that's a completely reasonable condition for verification on on our, on the noise impact.
Yeah, I assume Tyler, that the the permits for Bang the Drum were done before it was fully known what developments would occur on the site, correct?
Sure. Yeah, this, this was done, I think it's been probably a year and a half or so now that 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 was established there. So that was reviewed kind of in on its own right in terms of existing uses and compatibility with what was was happening on the site at that time. Residential, you know, a project hadn't come forward to the city, obviously like this, that that it could have been evaluated against for compatibility.
Thank you.
Just to verify, October 28th of last year is when that use permit was approved.
Okay, about a year.
Yeah. Commissioner Jorgensen, did you have other comments?
Not at this point.
Are there any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Shoresman?
Yes, please. Thank you. Just to clarify, so the the noise consultant would come in when would it? Yeah, I guess I'm just not understanding when that would need to take place. Was my understanding, talking to Kyle, that that if, if the Bang the Drum did not meet the noise ordinance requirements, then they would have to change their operations and reduce the decimal level of the noises, you know, assuming we're talking primarily about music, probably. That would be the the biggest offender of the of the noise increase. That that would, you know, that that would be judged sort of at the time that it was necessary.
So I had a couple of things there. One is that, yeah, with the use permit specifically, you know, any violation of that use permit would have them come back for a re-review of that use permit. So a substantiated code complaint would bring it back and we would, if they're not following the conditions of approval, that we would review and have an opportunity to reduce their hours. The other thing I wanted to mention is that the noise study did include a final page that was a memo. And essentially it said that the consultant is confident that the design solution can be implemented to this project to maintain appropriate code compliant residential habitable space. And that they've been contracted with Laurel Creek for a wide variety of commercial activities ongoing within the commercial. So the the noise study, the bulk of it was for the exterior noises and that's what's kind of required for the sequel and the determination. There was an additional memo that said that they're on board to help the applicant meet the interior noise levels as well. But that was something that was stated by the, by the.
I don't know. I guess I'm just sort of wondering if that condition is necessary to me. This is a little bit different, maybe. I wasn't on the commission when the mix was discussed, but I would think that the easy solution to to noise from the brewery, if you are sensitive to that, is to not rent one of the units that's adjacent to the brewery because the use permit's been determined in advance. So we have the benefit of knowing anybody who wants to rent one of those units has the benefit of knowing that the brewery is there already and may choose just not to rent one of those units if they're worried about noise. And then if there is a noise, if if there is a noise violation, as Kyle explains, then the permit would be reevaluated. Not that I have any real problem with adding or adding the I guess playing devil's advocate and wondering really about the need.
Well, the brewery, just to jump in, I mean, the brewery does have a use permit and a right to operate and operate in accordance with those conditions established for that use. And so I think Commissioner Shoresman is absolutely right that residential uses, people coming in with this project, you know, obviously are going to be aware of and know what exists there. But we do, as Kyle mentioned, in the use permit, have have an opportunity to verify through complaints, should there be issues with the Bang the Drum use not being in compliance with our use permit. And so that's, that's on, you know, on the books now, and that is something that we are able to enforce and and. and, and review at the time that we do see or have a substantiated complaint.
My understanding of what Commissioner Walken was suggesting was not that, that it not be complaint driven, but that, or that the applicant bring in a consultant to make sure that city standards are being met. Is that right, Commissioner Walken?
Yeah, that was the intent. There are existing city standards for noise. And since this is a sensitive situation, my thought was that the, the construction and design should be confirmed by a, a noise specialist during the building permit stage to make sure that the city's standards will be met when the building is constructed and occupied. And I think that's absolutely appropriate, and that is exactly what, what we would be doing at that building permit phase is to ensure. And I think a condition would be helpful to provide some additional attention on that issue as we do review those building permits to focus to make sure we do have that confirmation. So I think that is a, a good addition.
I don't see any other commissioners raised. Commissioner Quincy, yes.
So I wanted to indicate my support for the project. I think this thing is a no brainer. I think it complies with the zoning, meets the major city goal of workforce housing. I commend the applicant on putting forth the project like this and being so transparent and with our questions. So, and quite honestly, I, I think that this thing could have been put, you know, we talked about a consent agenda. I feel so strongly about how how non-controversial this is and how much of a no brainer it is. I think it really could have been put on a note, on a consent agenda. So I intend to vote for it. And thank you.
Thank you. I absolutely agree. This is a very exciting project. And when I left the site after the site visit, I thought it was very creative and it's, it's, it's workforce housing. It's exactly the kind of workforce housing we've been looking for. It's affordable by design, I think, and the location, the amenities, the, the detail with which they've looked at sound attenuation, et cetera. It's, it's impressive and I could see it getting awards as it moves forward and is, is occupied. So I'm very much in support of it. And so if there were no other comments, could we have a motion to approve with the condition with the two, three, two conditions that Commissioner Walken had articulated?
We already have a motion in a second.
That's true, we do.
Yeah, I just wanted, this is Commissioner Walken. I just wanted to make sure that the clerk had the wording of the conditions, or should I restate them?
I can just listen to the, to the recording later. We're fine, thank you.
Okay.
So will the deputy city clerk please call the roll of the motion?
Commissioner Walken?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Commissioner Quincy?
Yes.
Commissioner Shoresman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jorgensen?
Yes.
Chair Dondakar?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Lovely, thank you. The next item on our agenda is Planning Commission Goal Setting Discussion, which I believe will be led by Tyler.
Yeah, thank you. So I did have an opportunity to relook at the tape from our October twenty eighth meeting, kind of distill some of that information down. I tried to do the best I could in terms of, you know, providing those suggested edits and changes. And I did get some good feedback from Commissioner Shoresman on some, some additional modifications. And so I'm, I'm going to pull up a presentation. Really, it's just our two slides of two slides of the of the goals here. And let me pull that, pull that up. Oria, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Oops, do that again. Okay, great. So what I trying to move some things out of the way here, sorry. So the, the strikeouts and the, you can see, starting from the top, I added the preamble to the goals. Really, you know, calling out the D E and I kind of major goal there and following with deleting the first, which was previously the first goal under land use and then making some changes to the increased affordable workforce housing goal that I heard. And then also in the green is the additional language that that was recommended by Commissioner Shoresman, which I think is a good fit. And so maybe we start with just kind of page by page. So from this, you know, page that you see on your screen, is there, is there questions or discussion that you would like to see under the preamble or the first goal?
I do have a question. I missed the last meeting, as you know. So my question is, has the downtown concept plan been implemented and why was it, why was goal one removed?
That was removed, that was removed because it's in process.
Okay.
I, I like the wording of both the preamble and the housing goal. I think it was well done and it shows the emphasis we wanted to place on this, on the housing, on the ADUs as we discussed, Tyler. So I support both these.
Okay. So I'm going to move then to the, the next slide.
Any other comments from any of the other committees? No, I, I see none. So let's move on.
So let's move on. And this is the, and are you seeing this, just curious, this like this window on the right with the audience view and the panel?
No, we're just seeing the.
Okay. So it's just in my screen. That's why I move, when I click on something, it pulls it back. But anyway, so on goal number two, again, made some, made these edits after carefully reviewing the, the October twenty eighth tape. And again, the green were suggested edits. And then the green kind of boxed in text were, were suggested deletions. And I think it does fit well. I think it does capture what, what I heard and what the commission was looking for on goal number two regarding sustainability.
So if, if I can comment in case, hopefully it's clear with the edits in green that I proposed, but the edits to that first sentence there under, after implement the climate action plan with emphasis on item one, where there's some language removed, it's, I basically just restructured the sentence to make it seem a little bit more readable and grammatically correct. I didn't, I, I don't think that I, my intention was not to to change the meaning of that. I was just trying to restructure it a little bit better.
I mean, I think it makes, it makes sense to me. And so, you know, I, I think it's a good, a good edit and a good suggestion.
What I like about this item is that we're not suggesting great expenditures, but we are saying how could we induce people to do better. And, and given what Commissioner Quincy said last time about being just very, very prudent and careful as we move forward, we're going to be in rough times next couple of years. I think this one makes a lot of sense to me, the way it's articulated here.
Much cleaner now, I like it.
Right. So Tyler, I'm hearing a yes on that too, item number two, goal two.
Okay, great. And then we have our final goal, number three, that, that we were looking at here regarding multimodal circulation.
I think, could I make a comment?
Of course.
I think the language again is an improvement. I'm wondering about whether we could add anything to number three. I, I'm thinking, for instance, of John McKinsey's discussion of the need for dog parks in San Luis Obispo. And I'm thinking of in some ways, the lack of tot lots around and wondering whether it would be appropriate in something around walkability and transit that we also say something about develop, you know, recreation destinations such as dog parks and tot lots, et cetera, that in, in multiple locations easily accessible by bicycle and pedestrians, bike and pedestrians. I'm just trying to, I don't want to, you know, I don't think we want to list a hundred things, but in some ways, it seems like those seem important to me. And so I'm just wondering about the possibility of being a little more specific with an example or two.
If I can comment on that, I appreciate that comment. Commissioner Jorgensen, I hadn't thought of it when we were discussing all this the other, the last meeting. I, I would, I would be curious to know exactly what language and what examples you would put. Maybe you just add. I don't know, I'm just trying to think of language. I like the, I like the concept. An important piece of walkability is places that you can walk to, that you would want to go to. So.
Sorry, Commissioner Khan? Somebody was trying to get in. If I could make a comment, when we look at housing projects, we always raise this issue of needing to have accessible and outdoor spaces that are accessible so that people aren't getting into their cars in order to recreate. So Commissioner Jorgensen, did you have any wording for this idea that could be embedded in the encouraging infill development with amenities? Recreational amenities?
I don't think I got it down very well, but I was going to suggest I guess as a second sentence, develop recreation destinations such as dog parks, tot lots and the like in multiple locations easily accessible by pedestrians and bicycles.
Yeah, the develop's going to be the challenge, Commissioner Jorgensen. What, what if we, what if we kind of end that sentence with something where it says, you know, non-automobile alternatives with connections? You know, to retail services and recreational. Is there something to where it, it looks at, you know, you know, providing connections to, to existing and or proposed services and amenities like that. I, I'm just throwing that out there because develop, you know, the question becomes who, who's developing it, right?
Yeah, well, if, if, I, I think that's fine. If it says something about retail and recreation, I, I don't think that's bad at all, but something that's so that we get the sense that we're working to, to make more connections.
Yeah.
And I liked adding the commercial to it too, because you could take a walk to go to the ice cream parlor and get an ice cream cone, you know, too.
You sure could.
All kinds of, or the library or, you know, local pub, go down to have a beer and walk home, you know.
Do we want to connect that to encouraging infill development, that those who are doing infill development should be encouraged to do that? Because as we just pointed out, the city is not going to be able to provide too many amenities.
The development we heard tonight kind of does it. And they have Bang the Drum right there. So you'd walk, you know, down the hall and I don't know how healthy it is, but.
Maybe all of this should be rolled into number two.
Tyler, do you think you have enough guidance to sort of build something in here?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I was just going to suggest that, kind of what I mentioned, I think we can finish the sentence that just provides like, you know, the concept of, of making those connections to commercial services, recreational opportunities. I think.
What about something like, sorry to interrupt Tyler, it's just stream of consciousness, thinking of language. What about something like by encouraging infill development that includes and prioritizes non-automobile alternatives for accessing all those things that you said, for accessing services, recreational opportunities? And a third one, just to make it B three.
Yeah. I think, I think that finishes it, I think, very nicely.
It's good.
And I think we can, we can make that happen. And if the commission agrees, I'm happy to forward these goals on to finance for consideration by the council.
Does the commission agree to this?
I do.
Agreed.
Agree. And I'd like to, I'd like to just say too, I mentioned this to Tyler already, but I think he did an amazing job of distilling down our conversation that was sort of, to be honest, all over the place at the last meeting. And he pretty much hit the nail on the head, I think, with where we were going, even though we were kind of all over the place. So.
I think, I think the very elegant Tyler, they're, they're succinct, they're most, they're more succinct than the last seven years of goal setting that I've been involved with.
Yeah.
Liable to be read and followed.
I agree, and I think. I had, I had one comment on that last point of discussion about the connections. I, I support the idea, but I just wanted to make sure that the language that we, that Tyler puts together doesn't, doesn't make it seem like we're requiring projects that may not have a direct connection to services three miles away to be required to install a, you know, a walkway or a path to a commercial, a commercial center three miles offsite. I just wanted to make sure we're not doing that.
I think it's more an overview of circulation rather than a project specific kind of circulation.
I think the amenities are just examples of such as, rather than all of the above.
And I think it's clear too, where it says it prioritizes, I, I think that's a little bit more loose than making it sound like a requirement to me. It sounds a little bit more like a goal.
It's an encourage, it, it has the encourage, encourage language in there. So it's, it's a something that we will be paying attention to, but it's not a requirement necessarily. Okay, I support the concept.
All right. So I think, do we, do we need to formally approve this, Tyler, or do you, no?
No, we don't. I have, I have what I need to, to, to move forward and really appreciate your time and, and your input on this.
Thank you very much for your work on it, Tyler. I think we came to closure on these rather quickly because of your efforts to.
Yeah, you know, I saw an opening, you know, we had a lot of stuff on tonight's meeting and a couple of things dropped off. And so I knew that I needed to probably get this done sooner than later, because I think the next meeting, which I'll. I needed to probably get this done sooner than later, because I think the next meeting, which I'll, I'll highlight in the, uh, in the next segment of Agenda Forecast, we have a few items on that one set up.
Yes, I, I think, um, perhaps we should move on to the staff updates in Agenda Forecast.
Sure. Uh, so we have one more meeting for the year on December 9th. Uh, currently we have three items. We've talked about, uh, these three items. So I'm not going to go into detail, but we have the 600 tank farm, uh, EIR scoping meeting. We have the, uh, active transportation plan that's coming before the commission as well as the 830 orchid project that's coming back. Uh, this was, uh, reviewed by the commission on October 14th. It was continued with some directional items and, um, it's likely that this will be back at the December 9th meeting. Uh, we're waiting to hear kind of some, some final, uh, feedback from the applicants on whether they, um, want to bring it back at that time, or whether they want to make any other adjustments to their uh, plan at this time. But, um, those are the three that we do have for, for December 9th. And then we have a break until, uh, January 27th. And so there's a, a little bit of a break there, but we do have already, uh, several items that are currently slated for, for that meeting. Um, one of them being, uh, the North Broad Park. So there's a park there on the on-ramp, um, on Broad Street where it hits 101 on, on the, on the, I guess it'd be the west or south side, uh, where the farm is. That, that area there, there's, um, um, improvements and enhancements that are being proposed for that. So we're working on finalizing the environmental review for that. Um, and bringing that forward. We also have, uh, Bullock Ranch, which is out in Orchid area. So it's a large residential sub, um, subdivision as well as, uh, uh, housing project, rental housing project. And so many components to that. Still looking to, um, bring that forward. It would be coming to you with a recommendation from Planning Commission. And then we, we may have an item, um, as well on looking at the city's uh, urban reserve line as it relates to a section, uh, of, of the city near, uh, Saro San Luis. There is some interesting, um, information that we uh, became aware of that, um, we, it looks like the city, uh, had a decision back in the eighties that the urban reserve line should have been following a contour line, but that is not currently reflected on our land use map. And so we'll be bringing, uh, that information forward to the, uh, Planning Commission with a recommendation to city council to affirm, uh, that that decision that happened back in, in the mid eighties was, uh, you know, something that was the intent of the council at that time. Um, we've had the city attorney's office look into this and they're, uh, in agreement that that's based on the evidence that they've been able to find in the record, that that is the case. And so we'll bring that forward, uh, for you guys to take a, to take a look at as well. So that's what I have for forecast at this time.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Jorgensen?
I wanted just very quickly, Tyler, to go back to the last item and, and request that, um, we just see a copy of the final, uh, version that you sent on to finance of the goals. So we just have something since it changed from what we had in the staff report tonight. Just so we have it all in one place, we can see it.
Sure, I, I'll, uh,
We're done.
Yeah, I'll clean this up and then I will, I'll, I'll continue you guys just to email with those goals in there if that, if that worked for you.
That's perfect. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So I think we, uh, we are, uh, done with our, um, agenda for today. Um, and, uh, we can adjourn, uh, this meeting. The next regular Planning Commission meeting scheduled for Wednesday, December 9th, 2020 at 6:00 PM via teleconference. And, uh, I wish everybody a very happy holidays and Thanksgiving and safe Thanksgiving. It's been a pleasure.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Be safe, everyone.
Appreciate it.
Bye.